There we go. Good evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Laura Toye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Good evening and welcome to the year 2000. We're making this like a Taylor Swift era. We're in the 2000s era right now, which was a good year because that's when I graduated. Go Patriots.
Go Chargers.
Alavonia City Council, this is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on, believe it or not, Monday, September 23rd, 2024. I'm not showing any special recognitions or tributes, so we're going to jump right into the roll. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Toye. Councilmember Jolly.
Here.
Vice President Tashnik.
Here.
Councilmember Donavick.
Here.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
President McCullough.
Present.
And I show all seven members here. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of City Council held on August 26th. Council?
Mr. Chair.
Vice President?
So approved. Support?
Support from Toye. Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Okay. I'll let you know where we're coming up to audiences. This is just on the minutes. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the minutes are approved. We are now going to move on to audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. The council has set aside 30 minutes. You'll have three minutes. Name and address for the record. How are you?
Hi, good evening. Hi, I'm Carol Suchuk. I live at 13094 Woodridge Circle, which is in Plymouth Township. And I wanted to introduce myself. I'm running for Wayne County Commissioner in District 9, which services most of Alavonia, Plymouth Township, Northville City, and Northville Township. So just opportunity to introduce myself here tonight. I have over 20 years of local government leadership experience, mostly working for cities, and I've served as City Department Head and also served as the Director of the Plymouth District Library, where I retired a few years ago. So I'll be here this evening if anybody has any questions or would like to meet me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Name and address for the record. You've got three minutes.
My name is Patricia Hallman. I live on 15137 Riverside Street in Alavonia across the turkey farm. My issue today is with the Walgreens located on Farmington Road and...
Six Mile?
Six Mile.
Okay.
I was told that we could all go there to pick up our prescriptions during the week, which was today, Monday. When I got there, it says it was closed. They had no person there to give us our medication. There was no pharmacist there. They've been closed for two weeks, two weeks, and we were out medications for that amount of time. They came in to pick up the generator. DTE picked up the generator because it wasn't working anymore after two weeks. They left with the generator but didn't do any fixing. I've not seen any DTE trucks. I don't know how we're supposed to get our medications. That's not their problem. So I want to know how does this get resolved? How do people get their medications? If they truly, truly need them, like I do, I can't get them. I can't get it from where I get my medications from because there's no pharmacist there. The store is closed. So what do we all do? After two weeks, I've not seen a DTE truck anywhere around to fix the problem or what the problem seems to be, but we need our medications.
Yeah, no, and I... Yeah, I'll go to Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you for coming in and sharing your story with us and your concern. One of the things you can do is call your doctor's office, because I'm going to assume he or she prescribed those for you, and tell them of the situation. And they will reissue a lot of times your prescription to a different pharmacy, if that helps you out at all.
That didn't help.
Why? What's wrong?
Well, first of all, my doctor is not in the country. She's out of the country, so I can't... My prescription is ready, but I can't get it picked up because the pharmacist will not allow me to do that because they can't give me another prescription with the same. So I'm stuck without my medications because they will not release them because there's no pharmacist there that will release my medications and turn them over to the one on Six Mile and Farmington Road.
I might have a... So if it's... I... It's funny because I live right at Six and Farmington, and I just went up there a couple days ago, and I seen the paper sign on there. So I was kind of puzzled myself. Is there a card or a business card right up there?
Yes, sir.
Can you grab that? And you're going to reach out to Sarah. She's our Office Manager in City Council tomorrow. Just get your contact information, and we'll work with our governmental affairs to see with our DTE reps to find out what is going on. In the meantime, just as Councilwoman Toye would say, obviously, this is more of DTE slash Walgreens, but we're going to get you the best information we can. Is there any possibility you can transfer it to the Newburgh and Six Mile Walgreens?
No, they won't. They can't transfer it.
Okay.
They can't transfer it.
But please, tomorrow, just reach out to Sarah, just to get the contact information, and we're going to get back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, if you've just feel free, give her a shout, and we'll get your contact info. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Hello. Alan Dix, 35415 El Meyer Street, Alavonia. Wednesday, September 5th, 2024. I visited Glendale Recycling to dispose of oil. On the ground were large amounts of city documents and muddy August 6th, 2024 election ballots, ballots which led me straight to the dumpster where I saw a lot more of both. Many of the documents contained residents' personal information, full name, address, phone, which was concerning to me, so I took photos. I was not initially concerned about the ballots, as I knew from experience as a recent and longtime Alavonia election chairperson and worker supporting the current and past clerks with other election duties, that eventually blank ballots get disposed of. I was solely concerned about the PII when I called the mayor's office. Mayor's staff was wonderful, just as they were two weeks ago when I was elevating attention for downed wires, so thank you to the mayor's team. Later, I called back to inquire if there was employee policy regarding resident PII and asked if no policy, maybe the city should create policy, knowing residents probably wouldn't be happy. If it wasn't a violation of policy, who's to say other departments aren't openly discarding resident information associated with birth records, overdue taxes, water late payments ordinance violations, et cetera? So I respectfully ask you to guide employees to exhibit greater care and to begin the process of creating departmental and HR policies. Knowing governments tend to move slowly or are concerned from one person isn't likely to affect change, this is why I made a Facebook post. It was not personal or attacking. I simply wanted to create awareness suggesting residents contact the city. In posting only one photo taken from a distance, the ballots were obvious, but I initially did not mention them. It was others who raised concern and mentioned deadlines, and it was at that moment it dawned on me it was probably too soon to have been discarded, and an Internet search confirmed this. Now facing the second concern, I edited the post and mentioned ballots but did not go into detail. When I revisited Glendale while the bin was gone, I still saw city documents with PII and ballots all over the yard and collected those materials should anyone have any doubts. I'm here now to tell you that state election law was violated as the canvases have not yet been completed. Those ballots should still be in the city's possession until at least late September. I'm left asking what other laws have been violated or will be violated. What if there was a canvas recount? What liability does Alavonia face? The buck stops with the clerk to ensure new appointees and director reports have ample training and know all the election laws. This is embarrassing and concerns me as to the liability of the deputy clerk and clerk created for Alavonia and the potential risks ahead. Will Alavonia's Election Commission do the right thing and investigate and self-report this and any other violations to the State Bureau of Elections? Or is it on citizens' media or political parties to notify authorities or conduct FOIA oversight and assure this isn't just a tip of the iceberg neglect of duty? With another presidential election ahead and likely many FOIAs or state audit, I am concerned as a taxpayer and voter as to the desire or ability of the clerk or deputy clerk to execute and across the board, start to finish, always legal exercise of their responsibilities. And I hope you share these concerns in your full obligation to support election integrity and government transparency.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any more audience communication on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to council communication. Council? Councilman Donavick?
Good, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, go ahead, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. You know, I'm old. I did want to announce that DTE will be having an open house this Thursday at Riley Upper Elementary School, and I'm sure a lot of us will be interested to hear what DTE has to say. And that's September 12th, Thursday, from 4:30 to 7:30. And they're going to talk about the reliability improvements and investments in Alavonia, including trimming, grid upgrades, and other energy programs. And they're even going to have light refreshments. And so if you'd like to attend, that's at Riley Upper Elementary, and it should be a good program. On a Saturday note, those of you who are way too young, but that's okay. Harry S. Wolf, who was a... Some of you remember that. As you go through some historical things in the city, his father was very instrumental in developing Alavonia with properties, homes, businesses, donating properties to our city. I believe there's a small park. Jim had pointed that out earlier today to me, and he gave the land for the Little Tykes Park over at Five and Merriman, I believe, as well, and other parks. I didn't get time today to research it for once I had to work. So anyhow, he's survived by a lot of different people, and I won't go reading them all, but some, you know, Bonnie Wolf, who contacted me as well a few days ago about Harry Wolf the son, who lives near me, or did live near me. She's married to David Showerman. Does that ring a bell with any of you? Showerman's Party Store. So there's a long history. And then in their family, they have Marge and Chuck Mann's, Mann's Ferguson Funeral Home. So, you know, they're all Alavonia family, and Harry's going to be missed. He was born in July of '43, and he passed on September 7th of '24. And, you know, just a special recognition to that Wolf family. They've been so instrumental in our great city. So if we can request a few moments of silence to remember Harry Wolf and condolences to his family, much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. God bless you, Harry. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Donavick, then I'll go to Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. To that resident, that's the first I'm hearing about what you brought up that sound pretty concerning. If you could do me a favor and email sort of a summary of what you just talked... I mean, it sounded very concerning. I don't want to get into it right now, but if you could email that over to citycouncil@alavonia.gov, I think it'd be much appreciated because it's hard to grasp everything people say sometimes up at the podium. Also, the Alavonia Facebook page, Alavonia Community, they posted today about Rotary Park. I know there's been a lot of talk about when the pavilion and some of that park will be opened back up. Unfortunately, it's complicated, like anything with insurance companies. You know, as you remember, there was that tornado that briefly came through Alavonia. Unfortunately, the city experienced a loss of a young one, and a family had a devastating experience. While that happened, Rotary Park was damaged. Large trees fell on some city buildings over there. And I know there's been some frustration from residents. Why is it not fixed? Why is it still sitting there like that? So on, so forth. But if you've ever dealt with insurance companies, you can't touch anything. You have to let them do their process, and it's extremely frustrating. I know myself and some of my colleagues on council have worked with some of the dilapidated buildings that have come down in our city that are privately owned, and you get frustrated. There's a burned down restaurant that sits there for a year and a half, but the city can't do anything. So bear with the city. They are actively working on it. There's architectural work being done. There's bidding being done. So hopefully, in the next few months, that will be fixed, and it sounds like that park will be opened back up sometime next year. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If I may to my colleagues' points, I appreciate people coming before us and having concerns and taking the normal steps to come through. We had a situation of a resident that attacked me last meeting as well. And I appreciate that to some point. We're public officials. I've been in this game a long time, but there's always two sides to every story, and that concerns me, that we sit here and we don't say too much because we don't want to cause where we're 16 for the city, and we don't want to make the city look funny. But we also want to hear both sides to a story. I don't know people's backgrounds. I know the gentleman that came after me last time did. And quite frankly, I would appreciate... We're not supposed to get attacked with our names and things like that. And while this gentleman didn't do that, I didn't hear him say he ever went to the clerk's office, which troubles me. And I don't want to start all the story here because I'll call him, or hopefully, we'll be able to converse about that. But just remember, as we hear these things in public office, there's two sides to every story, and, you know, some of this is inflated because we are public officials, and it's in vogue to attack public officials these days. I'm sorry. It's kind of like the police. I mean, you know, people attack people, and those of you have...
Sir, sir, sir.
Sir, you're out of order.
Sir, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
Sir, you're out of order.
I understand.
Yeah, I just...
Just keep the comments.
City business.
Hang on. I'm not going to gavel at you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm allowed to give my opinion as well and my concerns because I just had this happen to me a couple meetings ago, as you're aware. And there was reasons for that. So I want to be cautious as this council proceeds and get background information because anybody can get up to that podium and claim whatever, proof or no proof. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilman Morgan, and then I'll go around the horn.
Yep, I have a couple things here. First of all, I'd like to recognize the August 2024 retirees. Christopher Hill of the Alavonia Fire Department, a fire captain, 26 years, six months. He retired August 17th of this year. And I'd just like to thank Christopher for his dedicated service and his years spent with Alavonia. Really appreciate that. Thank you. And that's a great feat to complete that many years. Secondly, I would like to hear the city clerk's explanation. She is aware of this, and I would like to give her a minute or two to quickly explain what was talked about here. Is that okay?
Yeah, if it's okay. Right now, after this, I have reports from mayor and other city officials. We'll go right to the clerk if that's okay.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to change this up to a little bit of a lighter note at this point. I just wanted to give a shout out. Yesterday, we had a Tour de Alavonia race. I did ride the 20 miles, and I'm feeling it as I'm sitting here a little bit, but I wanted to give a special shout out to Veronica Cruz from Alpha USA. She also runs the Alavonia Kids and Family, and that's who this was to benefit. It was a great event. You got to ride all over the city of Alavonia, in through neighborhoods. So if you saw, you know, hundreds of bike riders going through your neighborhood yesterday around 10:00 a.m., that was... I was in that pack, so I just wanted to give them a shout out. A great event every year, that first weekend of September. Also, I wanted to...
Is that true? You finished in first place?
I did. I did. I sprinted across the line. Yeah. I also wanted to remind Councilmember Toye that she needs to maybe talk about Bentley High School.
Yeah, I forgot.
Because I know you never... You forget about Bentley. You never bring it up ever.
What's Bentley?
But there is some sort of event, I think, this coming Sunday that maybe I will defer to you and let you discuss.
Oh, no. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's see. Where do we begin on Bentley High School? No.
What is Bentley?
I don't... I'm not real sure.
I was just a girl, and I walked to school in the snow.
There was a bulldog. Yeah.
Uphill, 10 miles.
Councilwoman Tashnik, yes, on the 15th of this month, what is that? Saturday?
Sunday.
Yeah, at 2:00, although my class is having some kind of little reunion at 11:00. But anyhow, they are going to present a marker from the state of Michigan and dedicate the site that Bentley High School was once... Ah, now it's Jack Hertzey's on there. So, no, we named that after Jack Hertzey. But in all seriousness, many people went there. I believe the school opened in '52, maybe, right in there. That wasn't the year I went. But anyhow, I'm going to, I guess, Commissioner Morecki and I are both bulldogs, so we're part of the program, I guess, and we're going to have an awesome job. And Schoolcraft College is donating the goodies, so it should be a real good affair with that kind of food coming in, at least, you know, Bates.
And it is open to the residents to come.
Bates is always good, too. But yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Tashnik, for mentioning that. I did forget. I'm sorry.
Well, you know, not a meeting goes by that we don't hear a go-bulldogs from you, so...
Thank you very much. Yes, you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Councilwoman Bozinski?
Yes. It was a busy day in Alavonia. In addition to the Tour de Alavonia, we also had the Good Old Fashioned Corn Roast, which spotlighted a lot of the great community groups that do important work in our community. It's a great event to see neighbors have some delicious corn from Bushes, and a lot of my colleagues here participated as well. So wanted to give that event a shout out before talking about other events that are happening, including tomorrow, I'm hosting a fire safety talk for seniors at 9:00 with the Alavonia Fire Department at the Senior Center. It's a free event that the fire department's bringing a lot of different departments together to talk about how seniors can stay safe at home and also in public buildings or, you know, care facilities wherever they're living or spending time. On Saturday, the city of Alavonia is hosting a paper shredding event from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. at DPW, and I'll be hosting my monthly coffee hour at 11:00 at the Civic Center Library. The topic of this month is Wayne County, and County Commissioner Terry Morecki will be there to present and answer any questions that folks have. So please come and join. There'll be refreshments, and I'll also give a council update as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donavick, do you have more or no? Are you good?
No, thank you, sir. I have 62 items. Let me just go through these. No, we touched base. I'm not going to touch base on them all. We did have the flea market on Sunday as well. Alavonia was booming. The weather was great. This weekend, we have the Clarenceville Golf Outing, which we're hoping for some good weather on. And then the biggest thing is, is Go Lions, you know? Big victory, yes, last night. Detroit was booming. Everything was rocking. It was good for the city. So with that, I'm going to move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. Before I hand it over to our clerk, I'm just going to note that we have communications from the library director and library commission dated August 12th. This is a receive and file. With... I'll do it right now. I will further do. I'll hand it over to Clerk Miller.
Thank you for this moment. This is the first time that this was brought to my attention directly. It went straight to a Facebook post, which was, I thought, done in haste. The individual who made this post is a former contractual worker that worked for us with elections, taking our recycled ballots to the dump. The materials that were taken were taken to precincts too early by one week, and that was open to interpretation by different attorneys who read the retention... Excuse me. Read the retention schedule. They each interpreted it differently. Those materials, once I saw that photo, were immediately taken from the dump. They're secured. We have possession of them, and they are unused, unvoted ballots. So for each election, especially during a primary, there's a lot of spoiled ballots. So we order 115%. So there's a lot of waste. As has been done in the past for the last decade, we recycle them when they're unused. It's in the interest of the city to recycle. It costs a lot of money to shred them all. However, moving forward, it has been decided we will always shred them. We will adhere to that retention schedule. It was a hiccup. We learned from it. We retrieved them, and it will never happen again in our department. There's a little ill feeling here because this person was released of his services for violating other election laws, so it's a tit-for-tat kind of situation.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to move on to our consent agenda. We have items 1 through 13 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on August 26, 2024, and determined to be non-controversial. Council?
No vote.
Support.
Why don't I give...
Sorry.
You're out of that. I'm going to go with Donavick and Tashnik in support. Do we have any comments from council? Seeing none. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes 7 to 0. We're going to now move on to unfinished business, starting with item number 14. It's a roll call vote. Support proposed amendment to Alavonia Code of Ordinances as amended comes to us from the Housing Commission and Planning Department to amend Chapter 3.12 senior citizens' housing tax exemption. A first reading was given by Councilmember Jim Jolly on August 26, 2024. Councilman Jolly?
Mr. President, I would like to offer a second reading at this time.
We have a second reading. Council, do we have any topics on this? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toye.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And item passes...
And item passes, item 14 passes seven to zero. We're going to move on to item number 15, which is a request to reconsider a proposed lot split. This comes to us from the Department of Assessment for the property located on the south of Eight Mile, west of Newburgh, and east of 275, and waive the deficiency in lot area requirements relative to parcels A and B. This failed on August 7, 2024 for lack of support. That has, we have brought it back. I'm going to open it up to counsel. Do we have direction?
Mr. President.
Councilman Donovan.
I'd like to offer an approving.
Support.
My prime support. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, I will note the petitioner is here if we have any questions for him. And I do, actually, to the petitioner, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Danny Berry. I'm the owner of Livonia Builders. My family has been building on and off in this community since 1970, hence the name. Obviously, not me. My parents started. We've built a lot of houses, a lot of subdivisions in the community. My wife and I both lived here for our first 30 years of our lives. We love this community. I plan on building a home for my daughter on one of these, these homesites. We really, I give kudos to you guys and past councils on what you've done for the city. You've obviously made it a very desirable community for people to live in. Builders like myself are always trying to find a parcel or small subdivision plot in your community. I also want to really thank you for the reconsideration of the vote. I do believe that you as counsel, you hear a lot of emotions from your constituents, motions that sometimes have facts and sometimes are based on opinions. I believe that based on my request, this will really help the area in bringing an additional home, as I'm asking for the three instead of the two, in the area of a value of the same or more than what's in there right now. Bring another family. The demand is there for families here in the community. And just excited to be here again. And I should have spoke last time, but I let you do. So now this time, I just wanted to let you know what my thoughts were.
Thank you, sir. Question, so you're proposing three lots.
Yeah.
And if I understand correctly, and maybe it's either Mr. Torre or you, the petitioner, currently it's zoned RUF, and the lot minimums for RUF are 75 feet wide by 150 feet deep. What you're proposing is Lot A would be 75 feet by 156 feet deep. Parcel B would be the same, 75 feet wide by 156 feet deep. And then Parcel C, which would be the third lot, will be 134 feet wide by 156 feet deep. Is that correct?
Correct. If you, you can look at this in two ways. The total area of the, of the site is 44,353 square feet. If we were to be able to chop this into three equal lots, we would require 40,000, I'm sorry, 45,000 square feet. So the entire site is .01 acre short of the required 45,000 square feet as a whole. Just the way that the road curvature is and the property line is, is the reason why we had to do 275s, and then the one is so much larger. But as a total area, which should be in consideration, the site is, you know, this area right here, short of three, three conforming lots.
And you hit the nail on the head with that. The property is weird. It's a unique lot, how the curvature of the road happens, and there's some, some complicated planning stuff that goes on behind there. And the reason why we're here to waive the, that, that width requirement, the total area requirement, is for RUF, you have to be minimum 75 feet wide by 150 deep, which you're exceeding on all the lots, especially in the third lot. But at the same time, RUF requires 15,000 square feet, where yours are 11,700 square feet. So there's a weird, it's hard to explain and rationalize sometimes, and I know Mr. Torre may not could maybe, but I think this is a unique situation. These are unique parcels. Again, these are 75 feet wide by 75 feet wide by 156 feet deep, and the third lot is 134 feet wide by 156 feet deep. And if it wasn't for that curve in the road, we'd more than, than suffice the requirement. So I think for all those reasons, you're not visually going to see anything different here. If it wasn't for that curvature, the uniqueness in the road, this would be a slam dunk all day long. So for those reasons, I'd like to reconsider this and bring this back up for a vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything further from counsel? Anything from the audience? I'm going to go to Kerry, but feel free to make your way up to the podium. Councilman Bazinski.
So, you know, my reservation about doing three opposed to two lot splits for this is that the home that has already built there, now we'll have a new home looking at it from its backyard, essentially, at least from the aerial view that we see.
Not entirely.
Not, but currently it opens, it's, it's not a house that is there. So my question is just, will there be any kind of natural barrier on that property that would prevent the current occupant of that house from looking in their backyard and seeing the front driver, you know, like seeing this new house?
Well, the one thing that I will tell you, I'm pulling it as far north as I can because the driveway is coming off that northern first 25 feet. So the house will be a lot closer to the two that we are building than the one that's existing. So let's just assume that the house is 50 foot wide and the driveway is 25 is a back out. I'm 75 out of 135, so at a minimum, it's 60 feet. So it's almost the frontage of a whole nother lot between the edge of my home and what would be the existing home next door.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was a great question by Councilman Bazinski, and I can understand the sentiment there. Would you be willing, even though I understand what you're saying, that house, the southern home will be 60 feet away from, again, very unique lots over here, because actually directly to the south is a ball field. It's a privately owned baseball diamond area. And then there's a house to the southwest of it. But again, these are very unique lots. Would you be willing to commit today to plant some trees, whether it be some sort of pine trees, some sort of vegetation buffer?
That's fine. I mean, I'm sure I'll have enough dirt that I could put a berm or something and make it even.
And I know there's engineering specifications with berms, what have you, but I think you'd be doing some, some good justice to, to plant some vegetation there. There's already some trees there, but it's, there's weird hills there. It's, I know you got to move a lot around over there, but I'd much rather see three homes here because eventually that structure to the east, in my opinion, at some point will be demoed, and, and some other large commercial development will happen there. So now we have an opportunity here in 2024 to create a residential buffer and build three beautiful homes as opposed to five, 10 years from now. That structure is going to go away. It's going to happen, whether it's five or 10 years from the road. And I think the residents of the south would much rather have single-family homes there as opposed to some large commercial multifamily or some other commercial structure along Eight Mile. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel before I go to the, the audience? The floor is yours, ma'am. Name and address.
Hi, Rebecca Landis, 38640 Morning Star Street, resident of Livonia for 30 years. We purchased in that neighborhood particularly because of its aesthetics, which I feel will be ruined if they split that lot into three. My neighbors, I have the consensus of them to, to speak and say that we do not approve of this. It's a very organized community right now, and it doesn't have a lot of traffic. It's kind of a cul-de-sac. So, I mean, that's purposely why we bought there, and, and the neighbors don't want this, and I particularly don't want this.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anything more from the audience?
Last question, Mr. Chair, sorry. If, if you just get two lots approved, for example, you still have every right to dock all those trees down, and you'll just build two houses.
Correct. I mean, those trees are all scrub. There's, there's no good oaks or maples or anything in there. Those are just overgrown weeds that begin. The hard thing to visualize on that property is, we were just there the other day with my, my daughter, her husband, and, and their in-laws, my daughter's in-laws, the other day for them to see it because they'd never seen it. And the way that is situated, especially with the overgrowth so close to the road, it's hard to visualize what three homes will look like there. But I would 100% guarantee you that if that thing was completely clear and you saw that full over an acre piece of property, you would look at it and say, okay, it makes sense. Three can fit here. But because it's so, I mean, you only walk 12 feet off the road and you're into, into that brush. Same thing with Eight Mile. It's probably only 15 to 30 feet off of Eight Mile. So there's not the visual ability to see it and say, this does make sense. It just doesn't. I mean, I'll be the first to admit that. But if it was clear and you, I mean, you think about that for a second. If you took a complete vacant acre of property, and I'm meeting the front setbacks and I'm meeting the back, or the side setbacks, and the only thing that is different is the rear yard, which from the road, you'll never see that, right? You'll never see the backyard of those homes. So it's really conforming. It's not conforming in the area, but as a total plot, it's not conforming of the area by this area right here. It's 10 by 20. It's, I'm sorry, per unit, it's 200 feet, but as a whole, it's 600 square feet. So it's not like the total area is so deficient, it's barely deficient by 0.01 acres.
Mr. President, last question to Mr. Torre. I don't know if these are similar or not, but Mr. Torre, if memory serves me correctly, it's different, but it's similar, I think. Is it on Fairlane Road, maybe in Livonia, Five Mile and Fairlane? There's, was it sort of similar? Were we being sued? They wanted to do four or five lots. Counsel denied it. I don't know if it was a similar situation waiving this, this, the lot square footage.
I'm not sure, counsel.
That was a long time. It was before this council.
Councilman Donovan. I think Councilman Jolly has background on it.
Yeah, you know, I can't speak to the exact specifics of that case, but I'll tell you that that case is part of the reason why I think that it's appropriate that we should reconsider this at this time. The instance that Mr. Donovan is speaking about was an instance that was very similar in regards to a proposed lot split, where we voted one way, and then the petitioner took their right to appeal that determination to the circuit court, the circuit court. Judge was not seeing things the same way that the city council did, and actually created a situation that was going beyond what was originally proposed to the city council. And I think there's, there's a real possibility of that happening here as well. So where they're proposing right now, talking about building three houses. If we left things as they currently are, the gentleman here could very well go to circuit court, and the circuit court judge could tell him that he could do any one of a number of things there, including building something like condos. I mean, like, there really is, I mean, I can't, I can't say specifically what would be happening, but it's possible that significantly different plans could be coming before us that would be more intrusive to the, to the residents in that neighborhood and be further out of line with what is currently existing there. So does that provide a little bit more?
That does, Mr. President, and I'm happy you mentioned that because technically speaking, just doing some quick math, it's 280 feet wide, I believe, currently of road frontage on the residential road. And conceivably, if the petitioner, if we deny him tonight, I could see a scenario where the petitioner, making assumptions here, takes this to court, and you divide that parcel up by four, you get 71 and a quarter foot frontage now. And I can understand the residents where four might be too much, but three on an acre piece of property, again, if it wasn't for just that unique curvature in the road, we wouldn't be here. So I'd hate to see us in a scenario where the petitioner says, you know what, I'm going to challenge this, and, and because of my, the court fees and everything else that comes along with this, you know, does more. And again, I just think this makes sense. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Councilman Bazinski.
I appreciate the additional background from my colleagues, although I will say that how the current property owner line is, at least in our maps, and the larger parcel C, I don't know how you could split this into four lots. That being said, I do understand the residents and the experience of the city before. So in following up with what Councilman Donovan had mentioned previously about providing some green barrier, that would make me far more comfortable moving forward with this.
I can do that.
Thank you.
One other nice thing, if I can say one more thing, is we're at the very entrance, right? So there is not going to be no construction impact on anybody in the neighborhood, with the exception of the house next door. Obviously, they'll hear us. Across the street is the office, is Pierce's medical facility. So we won't have that negative impact, as if I bought three lots deep in the subdivision, where they're having to deal with the construction and the trucks and this, like, we're isolated to the entrance. We won't be driving into their neighborhood. We won't be, you know, turning around way down there with cement trucks. They're going to be able to get in and get out. So it's a very minimal impact on the community as itself.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick statement. I mean, this, this appears to be actually a pretty good project. I've reviewed it thoroughly. And you know what? I'm not so concerned about being sued. I'm more concerned about just doing the right thing. And in this case, I think that this will be a benefit to the neighborhood. I think it'll be a benefit to the city of Livonia. These lots are quite large, and I think that it would be a good thing for us. So I am going to be in favor of this. Thank you.
Anything else from counsel? We already went to the audience. Mr. Berry, thanks for hanging out with us today and giving us that background.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Taschek.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And item 15 carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number 16, this is an award of contract, comes to us from the Engineering Division for the installation and commission of the new air-cooled chiller at the Robert and Janet Bennett Civic Center Library from budgeted funds. I will say that there has been new data provided. Councilman Bazinski.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I've spent some time on this issue. I have some questions that weren't answered, and I would like to put this into the committee of the whole.
Point of order.
Yes.
We need a motion on the floor.
Motion for committee of a whole. Does she have support? We have, right now, there's a motion from Councilman Bazinski to put this item into committee of a whole, looking for support.
I'll support it for sake of discussion.
The floor is yours.
Just for sake.
Yes, so this is about the plumbing installation project for the Civic Center Library. And I know we want to move this project forward, but there is just some data that I've been looking for from the administration that I haven't been able to get. I think it'd be who of us as a council to go over it, and the committee of the whole.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the gavel to Vice President. And may I have the floor? This one, too, I mean, honestly, the packet and some of the new data, this is a chiller install. We've had a temporary chiller for, I think, the last couple of years. With it coming into the fall months, I don't think that this is something, you know, I don't think it's super great to install into a winter months. Might be okay to do some work now, but I think that it's okay if we were to pause just to get some more information, just as we do. I have background in this field. I, just looking at the packet, I want to, I personally would like to study this further. This is something, Mr. Lear, that if it does go through, that we would get scheduled quick. But I have a number of questions still that I'm not prepared to, to vote on. That's, that's in mind. Thank you, Ms., Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to say that in this particular situation, our city and the employees who are putting this together, you know, they've done a lot of hard work, and this is two years in the making. This is a, this is a big problem, and it's cost us, the city taxpayers, a lot of money. And, you know, I mean, we've talked about this extensively, at nausea, actually, many, many times. And the bottom line is, is we need to move forward. We need to make this happen, and I would like to make a substitute motion of, and put this on the agenda for approving. Approving.
Support. Point of order, Madam Chair. I think with Councilman Morgan saying he'd like to make a substitute motion for approving tonight, approving resolution.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's correct, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to support that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we have a substitute motion for Mr. Morgan to hold the vote on this item tonight, supported by Mr. Donovan.
So we have to accept the substitute?
So if anybody wants, if anybody wants.
Well, he's a proponent.
Mr. McCullough.
Thank you.
I had my hand up beforehand. Just joking.
No, no, so, so, you know, Mr. Morgan, I appreciate those comments. The issue that I have specifically is when we approved this, we approved the chiller. We just approved the chiller, then we were looking at design work. We've been kind of going behind the scenes. I have serious concerns and question marks on the amount of piping that are coming into this. Usually a chiller, you have plug and play. This is a full building renovation in theory. I think our numbers were close to $400,000 or whatever it was for the line on, on the piping. That is literally the only thing I want to learn a little bit more on. Having this in the field, replace chillers, replace boilers, doing RTU swaps on rooftop units, a lot of times, they're fairly simple for plug and play. This being so intrusive to the building, I just would like to study it a little further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Completely understand my counsel sentiment on this, and normally, I would always support my colleagues when they want to go to committee and discuss further. I can, I can understand that. We're spending a lot of money here. $433,000 was the lowest qualified bidder who went through a bidding process. Everybody had the opportunity to bid on it. They came in at the best price for our residents. They have acceptable references. They've done everything they're just supposed to do. So with that being said, I'm okay with moving forward tonight. Some background on this, we've been dealing with this issue, an air conditioner unit essentially for our library for two years. I've been here, and we've been dealing with this, like my colleague has said, at nausea, over and over again, to the tune of almost, I don't know, a million dollars or so. We've spent so much money on this thing, and now to belabor it even longer because counsel wants to talk about specific things that we've had the opportunity to speak about, we're at the finish line here, and all of a sudden, we're going to talk about things that we could have spoken about a long time ago. So I just don't know where this came from, and I'm excited to finally move forward and finally give our residents a, a library with, with a comfortable environment. We've been dealing with this for years now. We've had a trailer out there for a couple of years, it seems like, providing air circulation, what have you. I know what it was like in this building. We didn't have air circulation in most of City Hall for a long time, and we finally have the chance to move forward. But the great thing about it tonight is we do have our architect. So I was hoping we could ask a few questions of the architect that's here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, counsel.
Name for the record, please.
My name is Brandon Kritzman, principal at Detroit Architectural Group. We were the lead on the project management side of the design portion of the project. As has been mentioned, that started, I believe, mid-year 2023. The chiller design moved forward after a scoping period that was executed by another firm. The decision to go from a rooftop water-cooled system to an air-chilled system on the ground was made certainly long before our involvement, but we executed the design portion of that was made certainly long before our involvement, but we executed the design portion of that project. The chiller has been on order for something to the effect of close to a year. Lead times on these large-scale mechanical items are significant. It's my understanding that the chiller is set to arrive somewhere around October 7th. So this is a timely matter. I can't begin to claim that I'm an expert in the mechanical side and the mechanical engineering portion of the project, but if there's any specific questions regarding the project, I can do my best to answer them at this time.
Thank you, sir. I am not a plumber, so I'll try my best not to ask you any specific plumbing-oriented questions. But you are an architect and we've hired you and you've done wonderful work for the city on countless projects. In your opinion, are you comfortable with this project? Everything is going great? I mean, we're ready to move forward, right?
From my perspective, from the design side, what's been bid is in line with the expectations of what was anticipated.
I love it. And to Mr. Lear, we, we're comfortable moving forward as an engineering department. You don't have any issues, any concerns? And we do have the chiller finally ordered and, and ready to get moving. How long does it take for this, this vendor to install this and get everything up and buttoned up before the weather changes?
Well, we haven't gotten into the entire schedule for the vendor to do it. Roughly three to four weeks is kind of the, the rough timeframe that we're given. Originally, the chiller that we ordered in the end of February was scheduled to come in at the end of November. We got a notice last week that it is arriving early, which puts it at the beginning of October instead. So we do need to take delivery of that somehow, which if we do not have the contractor set up for that, will, of course, run into extra money as well as the additional $12,000 a month that we're paying for the rental chiller as that two-year lease runs out at the end of this month.
Oh, so the contract runs out end of this month?
We, we, it's an open-ended. We do have the option to keep it at an additional, basically paying $12,000 a month. Or if we would have got rid of it last, we could have saved from this month. So it's, it's not a firm date that they're coming to pick it up. It's basically, it was expected to be two years and now we're running at that. But if we need to extend it, we can do that, it just at the extra cost again. So it's roughly, it's $12,000 a month if we, whatever the first of the month is, that's what we're paying. Yeah. So the contractor, more or less, is ready to start and try and get the, the pads. They've already agreed to take delivery of the chiller to their crane rental yard and hold it there until it's ready to be brought onto site. But once again, if that changes, you know, we, we have to know what contractor is taking delivery of it shortly.
Sure, sure. And I, I think, it sounds like everything's been done. We hire all these really smart people to do their job. And it sounds like you guys have done your job and then some. And I would just hate for government to postpone progress and and I'd hate for government to postpone progress of our buildings and let's get this job done. Thanks, Mr. Mrs. Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, I'd just like to say that we hired professionals and, you know, our engineering department is handling this and they've done a fine job. And this has been a long two years to get to this point. And now putting this in committee and extending the timeframe, we already know the costs. The city's prepared for this. Yeah, it's an astronomical cost, but it has to be done. It's our job to make these decisions and to make the right decisions. And prolonging this anymore is just creating a problem for everyone. Our professionals that we've hired and our city professionals that we have on staff, they've done everything they can to make this work as smoothly as possible, even though it's taken a very long time. And, and I think holding this up any longer is just kind of kicking the can down the road to see what the plumbing is. And it's, if our professionals have told us that the plumbing needs to be replaced, then we need to replace the plumbing. The money's already been set aside and we just want to get this done. I think I would urge the other council members that are trying to push this into committee to reconsider and to allow this to go through and let our departments handle their specific jobs and do what they've been put in place to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Lear, if I may. Do you have the number off the top of your head on how much? And I, and I know I have it there. I just want to just put it on record is, how much do we spend on the chiller itself?
Originally, I believe we are at a little over $160,000. Or $161,000.
Just as in anything, like, I'm not trying to sit here and tell you, but this is what I do for a living. I've been, I have subject matter expertise. And this is the only reason I bring this up. Just as in some of the items we have, we're going into the winter months. Right now, the cooling is limited. So from timing, I understand that the unit's here. But if I read the notes back on the reason that this failed in the first place is because multiple compressors failed over years upon years. And we had to spend an exorbitant amount of money to bring in a temporary unit. And we're not even talking about the electrical, that the cost that day-to-day operations to keep that chilled. So what I want to do is, Mr. Lear did provide the fact that this is just a little over $100,000 for means to cool the library, which is great. I'm all for that. I want this to see this for a place. And here's my issue is bringing up what the packet shows. So I, as much as I don't want to go through these items, but I want it on the record because this is going to go to a vote. Mobilization, $3,100. No problem. Removal of existing tree, $1,300. Don't care. Removal of topsoil and geotextile, $3,500 bucks. I'm good with that. I'm not going to go through each one of these because they're minor. I got a concrete pad for $15,000. But I want to go to item number seven. And please keep in mind that we were under $200,000 for the air conditioner, right? I'm putting it into terms. That's the air conditioner. So if this is a three or four-week process, item number seven, remove and replace plumbing per drawings for chiller installations. Startup and commissioning, $371,000, people. Listen, Mr. Kritzman is a fine architect and I do trust everything he's telling us, but I want to study it a little bit further. And for us to ask just to look at these drawings a little bit more because we were given that new data just two weeks ago, I don't see that being a big deal in the event of spending $400,000 without actually putting a second set of eyes on it. That's all I'm saying. So while I, we are making decisions on this. I have no issue with it. I just would like to know more on what we're replacing. Thank you.
Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Okay, so we are charged as a city council with certain responsibilities, one of which is to approve contracts that come across our desk. You know, I, I've been up here now for nine years, although that is, you know, probably doubled by my colleague to my right.
Had a lot more hair nine years ago.
I have sacrificed my hair for this community. So, so here, here's the thing. And I think, I think we get into trouble when we, from a policy perspective or a responsibility perspective, when we try to be an investigative body when it comes to these things. I know my colleagues have concerns. I respect those concerns, but I'm speaking just for where I am here, having gone through bid processes for quite some time now. We charge administrative officials to be responsible for the evaluation and the rating of particular bids that come through the, the, the process. When those bids come through and they are rated and they're evaluated by the professionals, in this case, more than a fine architect and more than a fine engineer, and they come up with a resolution and they put that forward for us, my perspective is that it is not our responsibility to investigate the details of that particular bid, but as to whether or not the process which culminated in the providing of that bid is something that passes the smell test. Was there anything that went awry? Or is there a reason to believe that something went awry in the bid process? Or there was any kind of inequity in the big process? They would leave us responsible or liable in some way to have a bad result for a nefarious reason. That's not what we're talking about here, right? We're talking about the details based on professional judgments and people seeking more information. We have had circumstances, and I know my colleague, Ms. Toy, can recall that we had somebody challenge a bid sometime in the past because they were the low bidder, but they were not chosen to be the one who completed a project. And we spent a lot of time and a lot of effort in regards to investigating that situation and ultimately came to the conclusion that there's no way in the world that that person should have had the bid because they just simply didn't have the purview of doing it. What I learned through that process of investigating that is we got to trust the experts. And, and that's what I'm going to do in this case. I, I respect very much my colleagues and I think that they are, you know, coming from a different angle than I am, and I think that's appropriate for them. But just as far as where I'm at, that's how I'm going to make my decision. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Ms. Toy, then, Mrs. Bazinski. Go ahead, Ms. Toy.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Just my concern is, as well as been said, you know, Jim, we speak so elegantly that what you said, Mr. Kritzman, November 7th is not that far away. And so my concern is also timing, that we get this on the road and, you know, I support it for sake of discussion because I think discussion's good to get people's feelings out and where we're at and all that good stuff. But maybe the time has come, more than come because of the fact we are up against the clock right now. And I certainly don't, I, I'm a little nervous about that. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comments too, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Bazinski.
Thank you to all of my colleagues for your feedback and your opinions. While I have my, you know, the information that I had wished to get from the administration and, and the sentiments shared by Council President McCullough, I will withdraw my motion to put this in committee.
Ms. Toy, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Thank you. Thank you.
So we currently have a motion on the floor, the substitute motion from Mr. Morgan.
Well, it's no longer a substitute motion.
So we don't have to, that's what I'm saying.
They can just.
Remove it as a substitution, Mr. Parliament here, or do we just?
We can just proceed as if it's the only motion on the floor.
So we do have the motion on the floor from Mr. Morgan. Council, are there any more comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Are there any comments on the motion before us? If there are no further comments or discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McCullough.
No.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye. And the motion carries six, one. At this time, I'm going to pass the gavel back to Mr. McCullough.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 17 under new business. We're going to jump right into a request to authorize, authorize appropriation and expenditure. This comes to us from the engineering division to remove, for the removal and installation of streetlights for the new senior center project from budgeted funds. Mr. Toramina, is this yours? Oh, Mr. Lear.
So moved. You gotta have a motion.
Yeah, we've got a, so.
Yeah, so moved.
Do we have support?
Support.
Mr. Lear.
So part of the renovations for the senior center, rec center, it was found that existing streetlights owned by DT were in an area that are being completely renovated and removed. So we asked DT to provide a cost for removing the seven streetlights that are impacted by the proposed footprint and providing 32 new streetlights or aisle lights to light basically the entire new project. With that, they came back with the, sorry, got the wrong one in front of me. For the contract for the streetlights to be put in and removed, a total cost of $83,190.87. It's, obviously, it's CT, so there's no bidding or really plans. They just kind of tell us what it takes and we're asking for approval from budgeted funds to go ahead and pay for this, get, keep the project moving along because they are at a point where they really need to get the existing out of the way. And we don't want the contractor doing that and messing up something
Sounds good, Mr. Lear.
Five mile where they're all tied into.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilman Donavich. Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Lear, would this money be coming out of the money to build the senior center?
So it is coming out of that money. It's basically taking it from one fund to another. So it's not an additional cost on the overall project. So it is, but it's not an additional.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. Item 17 carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to our final item, item number 18. It's a request to approve or deny settlement. This comes to us from the Department of Law for the Gail E. Sullivan versus the City of Livonia. Council.
Move approving.
Support.
So approving from Toy, support from Vice President. Council. Any comments, concerns? Seeing none. Audience, any comments or concerns? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Bazinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. Item 18 passes seven to zero. That concludes the regular agenda. I'm now going to go back to the audience for more audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. Any audience communication? Seeing none. Anything from the council? I'm going to go with Councilman Toy. Do we have support on that?
Support.
All right. I can think I could safely show seven. Let's do a 10-minute recess and then we'll jump into the study. Thank you.